I'd like to call an order at the May 16th, 2024 Myhamsburg City School Board meeting. Stand for the pledge. Welcome everyone. Go coffee.
Mr. Raimler.
Here.
Mr. Daffler.
Here.
Mrs. Gettr.
Here.
Mr. Mowery.
Here.
Ms. Neese.
Here.
Ms. McGowan.
Here.
Ms. Dogmafora.
Here.
Mr. Prince.
Here.
Ms. Stocker.
Here.
Dr. Blessing.
Present.
Mr. Homan.
Here.
Next we have the adoption of the agenda. And approval of minutes. The recommended action is approval of regular board meeting minutes held on April 18th, 2024, and special board meeting work session minutes held on May 2nd, 2024, May 8th, 2024, and May 15th, 2024. Next we have the approval of the financial report. And next we have recognition and appreciation for our retirees. It is recommended that the Board of Education adopt resolutions of appreciation for the following employees. We'll start out with Lisa Ankeny, and we'd like you to come up front, please.
This resolution of appreciation, whereas Lisa Ankeny has rendered 32 years of service to the city of Myhamsburg City Schools, and whereas Lisa Ankeny's performance, conduct, and sincerity in carrying out her duty has exemplified the highest level of achievement; and whereas Lisa Ankeny has distinguished herself as a teacher in the Myhamsburg City School District, now therefore be it resolved that the Myhamsburg City School Board pass this resolution as a token of its appreciation for her outstanding conduct, and that such resolution become part of the said permanent minutes of said Board of Education this date, May 16th, 2024. Congratulations.
And also we'd like a little speech from you, if you have one.
Did you think you must say anything?
Yeah. Do you want to say anything, Mrs. Ankeny?
Mr. Freeze can get it on the camera. Do you want to say anything? We're getting a group picture. Thank you.
Next we have Barbara Berry, who has 30 years in our district. We have the resolution of appreciation, whereas Barbara Berry has rendered 30 years service to the Myhamsburg City School, and whereas Barbara Berry's performance, conduct, and sincerity in carrying out her duty has exemplified the highest level of achievement; and whereas Barbara Berry has distinguished herself as a school psychologist in the Myhamsburg City School District, now therefore be it resolved that the Myhamsburg City School's Board of Education pass this resolution as a token of its appreciation for her outstanding conduct, and that such resolution become part of the permanent minutes of said Board of Education on May 16th, 2024. Thank you. Anything with the Berry? Next we have Kaki Browner. We have a resolution of appreciation, whereas Kaki Browner has rendered 34 years service to Myhamsburg City Schools, and whereas Kaki Browner's performance, conduct, and sincerity in carrying out her duty has exemplified the highest level of achievement; and whereas Kaki Browner has distinguished herself as a teacher in the Myhamsburg City School District, now therefore be it resolved that the Myhamsburg City School's Board of Education pass this resolution as a token of its appreciation for her outstanding conduct, and that such resolution become part of the permanent minutes of said Board of Education on May 16th, 2024. Mrs. Browner, do you want to shake or say anything? Perfect. All right, next we have Doug Courtney, and he has 25 years. A resolution of appreciation, whereas Doug Courtney has rendered 25 years service to Myhamsburg City Schools, and whereas Doug Courtney's performance, conduct, and sincerity in carrying out his duty has exemplified the highest level of achievement; and whereas Doug Courtney has distinguished himself as a mechanic and head mechanic in the Myhamsburg City Schools Districts, now therefore be it resolved that the Myhamsburg City School's Board of Education pass this resolution as a token of its appreciation for his outstanding conduct, and that such resolution become part of the permanent minutes of said Board of Education on May 16th, 2024.
That's great kids, right?
Doug, did you want to say anything? Everyone's pretty quiet tonight. Next we have Sandy Cummings with 24 years.
Resolution of appreciation, whereas Sandy Cummings has rendered 24 years of service to the Myhamsburg City Schools, and whereas Sandy Cummings' performance, conduct, and sincerity in carrying out her duty has exemplified the highest level of achievement; and whereas Sandy Cummings has distinguished herself as a teacher in the Myhamsburg City School District, now therefore be it resolved that the Myhamsburg City School Board of Education pass this resolution as a token of its appreciation for her outstanding conduct, and that such resolution become part of the permanent minutes of the said Board of Education dated May 16th, 2024.
Can you sign off party first?
37 years of my school's enough.
All right, next we have Karen Enzer, and she has 18 years experience.
Whereas Karen Enzer has rendered 18 years service to Myhamsburg City School, and whereas Karen Enzer's performance, conduct, and sincerity in carrying out her duty has exemplified the highest level of achievement; and whereas Karen Enzer has distinguished herself as a special education paraprofessional and NIH paraprofessional in the Myhamsburg City School District, now therefore be it resolved that the Myhamsburg City School Board of Education pass the resolution as a token of its appreciation for her outstanding conduct, and that such resolution become part of the permanent minutes of said Board of Education. Thank you, Karen.
Next we have Greg Ginnis. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Greg. Has 36.2 years experience.
Resolution of appreciation, whereas Greg Ginnis has rendered 36-plus years service to the Myhamsburg City Schools, and whereas Greg Ginnis' performance, conduct, and sincerity in carrying out his duty has exemplified the highest level of achievement; and whereas Greg Ginnis has distinguished himself as a teacher in the Myhamsburg City School District, now therefore be it resolved that the Myhamsburg City School Board of Education pass this resolution as a token of its appreciation for his outstanding conduct, and that said resolution become part of the permanent minutes of the said Board of Education dated May 16th, 2024. Congratulations.
Some of the student reps might have something to say. Any party words?
I just gave my best every day for 36 years. I'm very proud. I get a, I get a perfect 36 years.
Already got four days to figure that out.
All right, next we have Judy Hayes Casey, which she has 20 years.
Resolution of appreciation, whereas Judy Hayes Casey has rendered 23 years service to Myhamsburg City Schools, and whereas Judy Hayes Casey's performance, conduct, and sincerity in carrying out her duty has exemplified the highest level of achievement; and whereas Judy Hayes Casey has distinguished herself as a teacher in the Myhamsburg City School District, now therefore be it resolved that the Myhamsburg City School's Board of Education pass this resolution as a token of its appreciation for her outstanding conduct, and that such resolution become part of the permanent minutes of said Board of Education meeting on May 16th, 2024. Congratulations.
Any anything you'd like to say?
I would, I would just like to thank the district for 23 years of letting me do what I love to do. All my students are here, and I'm seeing them out, and it's, it's just, it's such a rewarding career, and I miss them already, and thank you.
Next we have Kathy Jarvis with 23 years.
Resolution of appreciation, whereas Kathy Jarvis has rendered 23 years service to Myhamsburg City Schools, and whereas Kathy Jarvis's performance, conduct, and sincerity in carrying out her duty has exemplified the highest level of achievement; and whereas Kathy Jarvis has distinguished herself as a special education aide in the Myhamsburg City School District, now therefore be it resolved that the Myhamsburg City School's Board of Education pass this resolution as a token of its appreciation for her outstanding conduct, and that such resolution become part of the permanent meeting minutes of said Board of Education meeting on May 16th, 2024.
All right, next we have Cindy Klein with 15 years. Okay. Her resolution of appreciation, whereas Cindy Klein has rendered 15 years service to the Myhamsburg City Schools, and whereas Cindy Klein's performance, conduct, and sincerity in carrying out her duty has exemplified the highest level of achievement; and whereas Cindy Klein has distinguished herself as a transportation department employee, she was a transportation assistant, now therefore be it resolved that the Myhamsburg City School Board of Education pass this resolution as a token of its appreciation for her outstanding conduct, and that such resolution become part of the permanent minutes of said Board of Education. All right, next we have Colleen Scarpino, who has 30 years.
Resolution of appreciation, whereas Colleen Scarpino has rendered 33 years service to Myhamsburg City Schools, whereas Colleen Scarpino's performance, conduct, and sincerity in carrying out her duty has exemplified the highest level of achievement; and whereas Colleen Scarpino has distinguished herself as a teacher in the Myhamsburg City School District, now therefore be it resolved that the Myhamsburg City School Board of Education pass this resolution as a token of its appreciation for her outstanding conduct, and that such resolution become part of the permanent minutes of said Board of Education. Thank you.
Anything you want to share?
Oh, gosh. Yeah, it's, I feel like it was just yesterday that I was hired here. I may not say that tomorrow, but today feels like it was just yesterday.
Well, congratulations.
All right, next we have Jill Sperlin, who has worked here for six years.
Resolution of appreciation, whereas Jill Sperlin has rendered six-year service to Myhamsburg City School, and whereas Jill Sperlin's performance, conduct, and sincerity in carrying out her duty has exemplified the highest level of achievement; and whereas Jill Sperlin has distinguished herself as a teacher in the Myhamsburg City School District, now therefore be it resolved that the Myhamsburg City School Board of Education pass the resolution as a token of appreciation for her outstanding conduct, and that such resolution be a part of the permanent minutes of said Board of Education. Thank you.
Anything you'd like to say?
Just thank you.
And last we have Linda Wells with 25 years experience in our, in our district. She has nine. Resolution of appreciation, whereas Linda Wells has rendered 25 years service to Myhamsburg City Schools, and whereas Linda Wells' performance, conduct, and sincerity in carrying out her duty has exemplified the highest level of achievement; and whereas Linda Wells has distinguished herself as a teacher in the Myhamsburg City School District, now therefore be it resolved that the Myhamsburg City School's Board of Education pass this resolution as a token of its appreciation for her outstanding conduct, and that such resolution become part of the permanent minutes of said Board of Education. And all that experience adds up to 324.2 years of experience.
And as part of your retirement gift, you do not need to stay for the rest of the meeting, so go out and celebrate.
And please sub next year. All right, next we have, on our agenda, recognition of citizens, staff, and students. And first we want to recognize our April Student of the Month, Carmen Morales from Meadowview Elementary School. And Mr. Amser will read all of our names.
The Myhamsburg April District Student of the Month is Meadowview Elementary student, Carmen Morales. Carmen was nominated by her teacher, Janet Gilkerson. Ms. Gilkerson said, "It is with great honor that I nominate Carmen Morales as Meadowview's April Student of the Month. I have been excited to work with her and watch her grow throughout this school year. We are so lucky to have her not only as a Meadowview student, but also as a member of our class. Carmen is a student that exemplifies all areas of purposeful people traits: being kind, being well, and being strong. Carmen is a kind student. Carmen comes to the classroom each and every day, ready to show kindness, not only to fellow students, but also to myself. She shows empathy to those that may be struggling. I have often heard her walk over to someone who looks to be sad and ask them, 'What is wrong?' Or, 'How can I help?' I have seen her rub the back of someone who was visibly upset to provide additional comfort. She is also willing to be a good friend. Carmen is also one of those that shows cooperation with her classmates, too. If we have an odd number of people for a group, she will tell me that the extra person can work with that group or during centers, and will ask if she can be the one to help someone with directions. She also regularly asks me if there's anything that she can do in the classroom to help. Carmen is a student who works well. Showing gratitude towards others is hard for many, but not for this little girl. The recent indoor recess days found Carmen that at least one of her friends always creating notes of gratitude. I was the lucky recipient of several notes expressing how grateful she was. She may not even understand the impact of those notes and just how much this gratitude brightened my day. Carmen is a strong student. Strength can be seen through her courageous, persevering, and responsible. Carmen does all three of these naturally. She shows responsibility by quickly learning classroom expectations and jobs. She remembers to bring items needed back and forth from school to home, like her library book and Thursday folders. She perseveres by working hard on academic tasks that may not always be easy on the first attempt to learn. Her courage is shown within her mindset. She's made comments that she doesn't get it, but she will be willing to try. She also showed her courage when she recently owned a mistake and apologized without any prompting. I hope that she was as proud of herself as I was of her in the moment. Carmen is a student that is a gift to a teacher and to a classroom. She has a great desire to learn. She's always on task and engaged, complementing activities with such effort and within allotted time. She wants to please and accept others' ideas and assistance. It's hard to believe our year with Carmen is almost over. However, it is my pleasure to be able to grow with her during her second grade year, and I am glad that I was able to be her teacher. Ms. Carmen, congratulations.
Next we have our May Student of the Month, Nita Khalil, and she's from... Gee, I'm so sorry. Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry. From Myhamsburg High School. All right. All right, come on out. I apologize.
The Myhamsburg May District Student of the Month is Myhamsburg High School student, Harith Khalil. Harith was nominated by his teacher, Daniella Damasio. Damasio said, "Harith Khalil has always had a passion for writing." And it is for that reason that I am nominating him to be the Myhamsburg High School Student of the Month for May. As a junior, Harith saw my als because he wanted to write a book. He spent multiple sessions in my room during flex period, but it was not, but he was not even my student. Harith worked diligently over the summer and wrote his first draft of a novel. He entered my creative writing class during the first semester of his senior year, continually revisiting and editing his book while enthusiastically... revisiting and editing his book while enthusiastically completing all of his course assignments. In October 2023, Harith and his classmates entered a nationwide themed one-hundred-word mini-sofa writing contest sponsored by the Young Writers. Harith's story was selected for publication appearance in the anthology titled Hunted Tales from the USA. He participated in National Novel Writing Month by writing at least five or fifty thousand words in November 2023, completing his first draft of his second novel. He asked to be my TA during the second semester and has been a wonderful help in the classroom. Harith voluntarily entered another Young Writers Contest with my new class of students. He will be published again in the anthology of winners entitled The Guilt, A Flaw, and Fiction. Harith is a joy to have in the classroom. He is positive, gracious, and ambitious, and a true Myhamsburg Viking. Congratulations.
So what's next? You'll have to come back and do a book signing.
I'm not signing books, I sign about my birthday.
Are you thinking you can have some time to stop this summer, or is it straight to Sinclair? Okay, so what were you looking forward to this summer?
I was looking forward to graduate law, and to work out, maybe, fixing my work.
Perfect. That sounds good. Well, let's get a picture. Thank you. Any special guests?
My dad and Mr. McSally.
Come on over here, we'll get some pictures of everybody.
So congratulations to the April Student of the Month and the May Student of the Month. Next we have on our agenda our Minesburg High School art updates by our art teacher Megan Newton.
So that's one of the art students. All right, hi, I'm Megan Newton. I am one of the art teachers at Minesburg High School. And I'm going to do just a little art recap. Last year I did this, and I was really talking about all of the art shows that we were entered. And I'm still going to talk about that a little bit, but I think my talk this time is going to be more about community. So just by the numbers, so if I'm just talking about the art shows. So we had twelve art shows starting in December all the way up till May. We have about two-hundred-and-fifty students that were in these shows, and that's not including the hundreds of students that were in the District Fine Arts Festival. There's about three-hundred works of art that were on display from all of these different shows. And about half of the shows are jury shows, so that means that the kids submit work, and then there's a chance that they do not get accepted into the show. So those jury shows normally come with cash money prizes. So we left with about thirty-seven ribbons altogether from all of the different twelve shows, and the students won in total nine-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars, which is the best thing ever. So we're super proud of them. And then the locations were all over the place, so a lot of them were here at the high school, and then we were at Kettering Fairmont, we were at the Myhamsburg Art Gallery, we were at the K-12 Gallery in Dayton. We had two shows, the Dayton Art Institute, the Myhamsburg Community Center, the Dayton Metro Library, and the Middletown Arts Center, and at Sinclair. So that was just kind of our snapshot of all of the different shows. So now I'm going to switch on over to the community thing. So I think it's interesting as teachers, right? We kind of started to focus on kind of themes throughout the year, and my unintentional theme was just this community outreach. Like, I didn't know it was happening until it happened. So with the mini-grant, I'll start off with that. I had Etch come in, and Etch is a Dayton Street artist, he's pretty well-known in the community. So Etch came in and he worked with the kids to figure out what do we want to be painted in the atrium. So the kids wanted a biking ship, so that's what he did. So Etch came out for two days before Thanksgiving break, and he painted, and it was a whole school thing. And my students were out there, other teachers were bringing their kids out there, and they were all just sitting in the atrium, and they just watched him paint. And it was such a cool, like, quiet experience, just kind of like a little break in their day. And then the art students, they worked on gesture drawings, so they were drawing him as he was painting, so we have all of these drawings that I've collected, I'm going to give it to him in like a little book. So it's very sweet. And then Etch came in later and he worked with the students on calligraphy and writing, so then they all learned like different lettering styles. So then from there, we had a former student come in, she graduated in 2020, Helena Gilman. And Helena started her own business, it is Creative Customs by Helena, and she does balloon sculptures. And this is her full-time job. So she came in and she talked to all of the art classes, we were in the lecture hall, it was a packed house, and she talked about how she went from graduating, she had some things where she wanted to go to Sinclair, it didn't work out for her, she had some health issues, so she was just going through her whole story, which was just kind of this whole roller coaster. And then she started making a balloon sculpture for like a baby shower, and it exploded from there. So she now makes huge balloon sculptures, and she's hired through Austin Landing, and she does like all of their backdrops, and she did like the Medler View Glow Dance. So she came and talked to everybody. And then she worked with Noel Coleman's students, and that's the ceramics art teacher, and they made this giant Dale Chihouli, who was a glass artist, you all would know him yourself, that was in the atrium, and it went across like one of the beams, so when you walked in, it was just like this wacky colorful thing. So she taught everybody how to curl balloons, and then they had it down like other little poles in the atrium. So that was really fun, real-life experiences for the students. The installation was up for a while, so that was super cool. And then I'm going to talk about my passion project, which was working with the city of Myhamsburg, and it was all thanks to Dr. Blessing. So last summer I get an email from Dr. Blessing, she's introducing me to some of the Parks and Rec people. And the Parks and Rec people, they're like, "Hey, listen, we have this idea, it's called the Blue Line." I wish I had pictures to show everybody. So then we started talking and we made a plan, so that was phase one, I want to talk about that because that's like the big thing. And I want to talk about this side project that we worked on with the city. So picture it, it's a three-dips alleyway. There are some boarded-up windows with paintings on them, and they were done like fifteen years ago, like Junie Toadmine's kids did them. And they're all dry-rotted, and they just... they're being taken down. So the city provided my students four-foot-by-eight-foot PVC board, and my students developed... we have six of these boards going up, and hopefully it's going to go up throughout the summer, but they're making like brand-new metal frames for them. So then the kids chose a color palette, and if you've been in the three-dips alleyway, there's a new sign, it says the Blue Line Project, and there's four colors, so you have red, yellow, blue, green, and white. So we chose those colors, and we can obviously make the tints from there, it's like brighter colors. But so there's a nature board, that's like the canal, and then animals that you see in Myhamsburg. And then there is a sweets board to honor all of the sweet shops in Myhamsburg, so there's like ice cream, and there's like decadent coffee-looking things. And then there's a savory board, so that's like burgers and fries and pizza, and that's for all the restaurants. And then we are currently working on a board, and it's like this little vintage car with a Ferris wheel for like Spring Fest and our Crusader Bird. And then... is that the last one? No, it's not. Then we have a Star City board, and at the District Fine Arts Festival, we had one of the boards out, and it was one of the creative stations that we have, so there's a whole bunch of stars on it, and then anyone who came to the Fine Arts Festival, they painted a star. So this board is just super full of color. So that will be up in the three-dips alleyway. I've been talking for a long time. Are we okay? Okay, all right, all right. I could just talk forever. So, okay, so now, all right, the Blue Line. So this has been in the works for apparently twenty years. The Merchants Association has wanted this. They want to connect Water Street to Second Street, so that way people come in to visit the city, they're always kind of around the Water Street, Main Street area, and they never go see the businesses on Second Street. So they've been wanting some sort of connector line to do this, and then when we met with them, we walked through it, they had plans drawn up from a company, and they looked great. So then my students started working on it, and whenever I talk about art, it's really important for us to talk about the process, not just the end product. So it was my AP art students, so it was like twenty-seven of them, and we spent so much time prepping for the Blue Line. So we had to break them up, so there's four alleyways, there's this three-dips alleyway, Grandpa Joe's Alleyway, it goes around Farmer's and Merchants Bank, and then it kind of goes where like Backwater Booty was, water mark, like that little cobblestone path. So we had four alleyways, the students were put into teams, and then we worked from there, we did team captain, they made stencils, that way it was good to go. I got on Google Earth, and then I measured each alleyway, so it was like seven-hundred-and-seven feet in total. That's a long line. So then I took that Google Earth measurement, and then we worked in the bus lot, so I was like, "From here to here, this is Grandpa Joe's, and from here to here is Three Dips." And the kids practiced chalking the line, because we only have one day to do this. Can you believe it? So then I was like, "It has to run smooth," and it did. So after all the practice, after the stenciling, we showed up, and then we painted this Blue Line, started at seven-thirty in the morning, and we were done, cleaned up by two-fifteen. It was wild. So when you guys go walk down Myhamsburg, you follow that Blue Line. And the Blue Line, the kids had a lot of freedom with this, so they wanted the Pac-Man to be yellow, and the city was like, "You got it." They wanted the little ghosts, the ghosts weren't on the original design, and the city was like, "You got it." And then they changed a lot of the design, so there's a lot of student voice within the line work, which is really cool. So, and then when you go back and look at the alleyway, full-circle moment, remember how I started this long conversation about Etch? Remember that? You're like, "Wow, that was ten minutes ago." And then I'm ending with Etch, because Etch painted a new mural on the three-dips alleyway wall. So that's just a really nice thing. We didn't work with him, but it was just nice that his artwork kind of works with our artwork. That's it! Thank you! Thank you for listening.
We walked the Blue Line on Friday night at the park opening, so thank you, it's great.
Do the students get to keep the nine-hundred bucks? Or does it go back into the...
Oh, the students do.
Yeah.
Yeah, so whatever they win or whatever.
Awesome.
Now, if you haven't seen the Blue Line, it's very cool. Thank you, Megan. All right, next we have the Print Bowl of Media Opening Identity. Oh, wait, oh, wait, okay, I thought, okay, I'm sorry. I mentioned Media Art Students.
Nice try, Mrs. Sneeze. Megan's probably my favorite teacher, I wish I could be in her class. We collaborate all the time. So when Etch was here and her students were in the atrium, my students did a livestream, so we set up a camera, and then any teacher in the district could put that on and watch how this mural was being put together. And then also she started a couple of years ago, students painting their parking spots, and my daughter's a senior, so she painted her parking spot earlier in the summer, and what a great start to the school year, as these students were out there collaborating, helping each other out, hanging out before school started, getting their spots together. My name is Tim Fries, I'm the media arts teacher here at the high school, and in media arts, it's one of our tech prep programs, we learn video broadcasting, podcasting, all kinds of media. And, you know, one of the things that they do is they do a live broadcast every single morning, so they come in before school starts, students are arriving at six forty-five, and getting everything set up, and writing the script, and getting graphics together, and then by seven-thirty, we are live on the air in every classroom, and then it's posted to YouTube, and we have hundreds of followers that check that out on a regular basis. And it gives students an opportunity to get their voice out for their clubs, and their meetings, and sports, and all that kind of stuff, and it's all student-produced. Today, I was on a football field getting ready for the livestream graduation, so you know, you've got some family that's in Florida or can't be there, they can watch graduation, and then they can go back after graduation and check it out as well. It's a big undertaking, but students love doing that stuff. One of the highlights of our program is a trip to New York City, and for the past twenty years, our students in media arts have been taking this trip. And tonight is just a thank you to the board for approving this all these years and giving us this opportunity. We've gone, we did it twenty years ago, and we have gone every year with the exception of the pandemic, when it wasn't a possibility, but we've been able to do that. Along with me is Stephen May, he's our media center professional, but he's also, he was also an English teacher, so when we first started working together, it was because he was teaching an English portion of media arts, we collaborated, and it's truly his idea, he runs the show, I just got out of the way, and he does, he's going to talk. And then I also brought two students, Ally Fries and Katie Massey, and I'll just tell you a little bit of the trip. So again, I just want to give you a thank you so much for the opportunity, and I'll let them finish up.
Real quick, when we first started talking about this, I was teaching English and choreography teacher, I mean, my student, I mean, let's not be a liar about teaching, but he was my student. So when we first started talking about this, Fries was like, "We really should take the kids to live tapings, I'm from Chicago, we should go to Chicago," and I'm like, "I live in New York in the summer, and there's only one show, or two shows in Chicago that were big, it was Jerry Springer at that time and Oprah," and I'm like, "Let's go to New York, we can get in." And I allowed my friends work in television in New York, and we started thinking and collaborating, and we figured out New York would be better, and we could get the kids into more shows. So in the last twenty years, we've gone to so many shows and seen the changes and everything and so many people. Again, we are so thankful that you guys let us do this, but it's incredible to see the kids flourish when they're there. And like, time after time, the people are saying how impressed they are with our kids, which helps us, too. So I'm going to let the kids talk so that we can get out of here.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Ally Fries, Mr. Fries is my dad, so it was really cool to go on this trip with him, and my mom also went, but we just wanted to say thank you, because it was so cool to see all of these live tapings, and we were actually lucky enough to go to World News Tonight and see it live. And so we got a personal tour and walked through everything and saw how the graphics were made and the editing that needs to happen, and it was so cool to see. And then we were also actually in the control room during the live taping, which was insane. It was a huge room, but we noticed that a lot of the equipment they were using is also what we use, which was really cool to see. And as they're yelling things out, there were some that we didn't understand because of how big the show is, but most of it were like, "Oh, we know what that means, the switch and the sound," and it was really cool to see. And then also just all of the live tapings and interacting with the people, and it was so cool to just like see, being in the number-one media capital of the world, it was amazing to see how what we're doing is happening all over the world. So thank you for that.
I'm kidding, man. As Ally was saying during shows, like, a lot of the people at the shows were, thought we were high-spangled. we were high school college students and we were actually high schoolers. And it was just like, that just speaks volumes to our program, how much we know. And it's really the same thing that we're doing just on a large, uh, scale. And, um, and we spend, this group has been together for a long time. We have spent the past two years together. And every day at school, we spend two hours together, five days a week. Like, we just know each other a lot. And after this trip, we got, like our bond was so much closer. And everyone after the trip just felt so inspired. And like, I'm, this is off the topic, but I'm going to the date for pre-med. But like, this trip really made me consider like going into film or something like that. It's just so inspiring that, yeah, we just can't thank you guys enough.
And then one other thing we wanted to talk about was at shows, the guests, or not the guests, the hosts will interact with us. And so one of the coolest shows we saw was The View. Um, Katie and I actually were sitting on the floor during it. And during commercial breaks, they'll talk to us. And they were asking us questions and they're like, oh yeah, we're from Ohio. And they're like, oh, so where are you guys going? And we're like, Miami'sburg High School. You're high schoolers? That's insane. And so it was so cool for them to be like, oh wow, these kids know a lot. And it was cool to talk to them and see all the behind the scenes things that we do that people don't see. And also just how media arts has changed our lives and all, like, we're more confident and like doing this. Katie and I were talking about it really, just like the morning else, we just talk. It's not scary. And it's just cool to see how relationships work and that if we do decide to, um, have a career in film or productions, that we could go there and everything is still good for us. So thank you for allowing us to follow this trip.
Thank you so much. Sounds like a great trip. Alright, now we'll go into that approval of meeting opening items, C through J.
I move for you.
Alright. Go ahead.
I move for the approval of item C through G. Second.
So first by Mr. Daffler and second by Mr. Ansler. Do we have any discussion for any of those items? The financial report? Any questions? Mr. Just, Mr. Levinson, did you want to say anything?
I'm, I'm gonna give the forecast here, just a little bit, so I'll just do it.
Okay. So roll call, please.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mrs. Gettner?
Yes.
Mr. Mallory?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Ansler?
Yes.
Alright. Next we have public comments. Um, before we start, I need to read that each person who wishes to address the board shall complete this form prior to the beginning of the meeting. So I do have four forms here. Commenters will give his/her name and address. Each person is allotted three minutes to speak. The first 15 minutes only of public participation will be allotted for public comments concerning agenda items. An additional 15 minutes for discussion of other topics will provide a total time of 30 minutes for public comment. We will give a 30-second warning so speakers know when their three minutes is up. During public participation, each member of the public should direct their moment, their comments to the board as a whole, consistent with our policy. This is not a time to question individual board members or district employees. As a reminder, our expectation tonight is that everyone conducts themselves civilly and respectfully. We will not tolerate profanity, frivolous, repetitive, or harassing statements. And I, um, I'm gonna do this in the order that they came in and none of them apply to the agenda tonight. These are all others. First we have Shelby Nunnery.
Name your name and address.
Yes, I'm Shelby Nunnery and I live on Decker Court in Miami'sburg. Um, this following statement is made on behalf of Zachary Saunders, a resident of 2229 Brookstring Court in Miami'sburg, who also has children in the district as well. Uh, members of the board, let me start by apologizing that I cannot be here in person. My son has an extracurricular activity at this time and my kids will always come first. On May 13th, there was a discussion in an online group consisting of approximately 6,000 community members. This discussion centered largely around a board member's statements during the last board meeting that critical material was withheld from them prior to a vote. In this discussion online, a district employee stated to the entire group that approved materials had been made available in the memorial building cafeteria for the past two weeks. This comment was not directed at anyone, but with a general statement. The board member in question then proceeded to accuse the teacher of censoring them, spinning a narrative, spewing Trump-hating political garbage, being intolerant, stated that this employee's opinion is irrelevant to me, and accused the employee of having a history of projecting his politics on everyone around him. I contacted the board via email as I fear contact like this is in violation of board ethics policy that states it is, quote, unethical for a board member to publicly criticize a district employee, end quote. The board member in question was the first to write me back stating that this was a non-issue as they believed the group to be private and that I was personally free to leave whenever. When I stated that I did agree with their interpretation of private versus public speech, they let me know that their conduct was intentionally inflammatory and their goal was to elicit complaints to start a large discussion with the board. They also spent a lot, a great deal of their response detailing their wife being removed from an unrelated group and accusing that group of ethics violations and what I can only interpret as attempting to deflect from the issue at hand. Policy violations open the board to costly legal actions, costs that would be much better spent within our district on resources for our students. I do not care what a board member's personal politics, politics are, and I probably disagree with most of you on most issues. However, as the taxpayer, I expect my elected officials to act ethically and be held accountable by their peers when they fail to do so. A board member that is intentionally inflammatory and direct violation of board policy is a liability to our district. It's my hope that the board will address this contact and take any and all steps necessary to ensure that board members are ethical, upstanding representatives of our district. Given that this board member has, in their official capacity, stated that they were aware of the policy and intentionally acted in this manner, I would encourage the board to, at a minimum, hold a vote to censure the board member in question over their neglects of duties. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Nunnery. And just a reminder to, uh, we, during public participation, there's no dialogue between the public participants and our board members. Next we have, um, James Greenfield.
James Greenfield, 516 and Senior Island. At the meeting, 18 to April, there was a vote to pass the material for the school board of 2024, '25. Let me add you to the suggestion, the cause. The superintendent and president of the school board needed to push this vote now, while should we care about the B B C rules? I've got another suggestion. We, the Ohio State Directors, more qualified than we to learn about the ethic histories than we, the people, advance the students to better equality of life. These are my criticisms. A high math skills, English grammar, curse of writing, school seems to be far short to the students. I would like the students to know, to learn, what's in the history of the Reformation years, uh, the sixth centuries to the 18th century. The European Church and state government, which we, the American people, separated in the First Amendment of our United States Constitution. Freedom is never voluntary given by the oppressor. It must be demanded by the oppressed. Wrote Martin Luther King Jr. This is a quote, quote in a book that you approved in the 2025, '24 year, My Freedom History of the American African People, the third edition. Kush, the descendant of Noah in the biblical times. He moved to North Africa and he started small kingdoms, tribes, villages. And they fought each other, taking themselves as prisoners of war and then selling them for slavery. Egypt's first American in history.
30 seconds.
The Miami'sburg School Board impressed, oversighting board directors' code of conduct. You oppress the students of Miami'sburg, the parents of the same students, and Mr. Mallory. When this year, Mr., the elected board, Mr. Mallory, asked for a move to table the vote so that board members will have adequate time to review the school year's material, Mr. Dapser is staying from his vote. His second vote. I could go on? That's what the 30 seconds is for?
Thank you, Mr. Greenfield.
Yeah, I'm lost on that. At least, Mr. Daffler gave an open thought to Mr. Mallory's motion before rejecting the motion to second. Mr. Mallory, you have my vote, for you had stood up to the public, citizens of Miami'sburg, requesting that the B B C C rules be followed.
Yeah, but the 30 seconds is over.
Okay, the B goes?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Greenfield. Okay, and next we have Scott Taylor. State your name and address, please.
Scott Taylor, uh, 10110 Miami'sburg Spring Row Road, Miami'sburg, Ohio, 45342. So last week, Miami'sburg School Board number expressed concerns regarding approving educational curriculum without having access to review the material. His concern was motivated in part due to what he observed in the fourth grade school's social studies book entitled Ladders, a Bill of Rights. He suggested the Miami'sburg School Board consider hiring a outside firm to provide analysis and pose educational curriculum for independent review. He made a motion and laid a vote to the educational curriculum, allowing for time review, but failed to get a second on his motion. In the end, the Miami'sburg School Board approved the educational curriculum without review. Miami'sburg School Board is a separate oversight authority to represent voters in the community that is separate from teachers and the teachers' union. Item 6, the board major responsibility states in part of the board responsibility for approval rejection of textbooks. How can the board approve without some time for review? So this board, uh, has a track record of approving questionable materials in the past. I have the Ladders book that Jason Mallory brought up as one example. I know there was a program sometime back called Equity Fellows where I was able to publish a request, review 387 slides from it. And I really was concerned that basically this thing that promotes a view of people of color oppressed by white oppressors. And I spoke to the board about this in July 17, 2023 and then published a 28-minute video with the material I read. Another thing was the Voice for Equity Conference Women Lead. Was a, to be attended by the superintendent and the director of elementary education. And analysis that I did of this website showed the organization to be a partisan organization, promotes the concepts of systematic bias, equity, social justice, systemic oppression, and using history to promote an agenda. And at the meeting, which was enthusiastically approved, I got on my phone and looked at that website and I became very concerned. And I really wondered, did school board members really review that conference before they approved it? Even though three examples that I thought, and I really feel that school board members really need more time to approve things because if you present it to them with less than 48 hours, how would they have a chance to really review the material? And, uh, some of the comments from it is one board member said that I don't want to micromanage every course textbook that we have. Another board member said, I feel very confident in what was, uh, chosen by people who have educational education. So essentially, I really feel that perhaps maybe we do need more time to review things because elected officials are represented, elected to represent the people. And that's my concern. I really want to appreciate, thank you for the time to be able to speak to you this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Next we have Daniel Taylor.
I just, we don't need no introduction. We all know who I am. My name is Daniel Taylor. They call me the freeriding businessman. So it says, I'm too scared to come down here and talk to you all, but here I am today and I want to say my piece about the way I think about things. Both my children attend.
Can you state your address, please?
I'll do that. My name's Daniel Taylor, 80th Central Avenue, downtown Miami'sburg. I'm very well-known in Miami'sburg, everybody. Extremely well. Most of my friends own all the property of downtown Miami'sburg. Both my children attended Miami'sburg and graduated from there. My boy's been in the Army now 12 years, very successful. He also owns a business I helped you start in downtown Miami'sburg. My daughter's a surgical nurse. My youngest boy, he works, he's educating, he's a boxer. Six foot six, 320 pounds. I'm gonna speak today what I'm about to say. Where do you know my name's Daniel Taylor. The children went to school there. None of the garbage that is going on now was going on when they were going to school. The stuff I hear blows my mind. Are you all trying to brainwash the children coming up in this crazy world? Do you all forget the things better in the past when we were kids? For the man behind the COVID lockdowns, as single-handedly has destroyed our children, to the people pushing the dangerous gender identities onto the youth of America. Though have a glaring thing in common, they stop loving America and God. This is an important reminder that being a person of God keeps children on the straight path. I know you all don't know me, but I can promise you, you're gonna know me after today. I'm not furious what's going on at our schools and libraries. I'm I rate fed up with it. And 80% of the parents in Miami'sburg are also. But they're silent about it because threats and repercussions. The world around us says that we should believe, keep our beliefs for ourselves whenever they go against the tyranny of diversity, equity, and inclusion. We fear speaking the truth, a bad thing, and that is wrong. I'm also especially upset with the man who didn't have enough manhood in him to say no about the critical race theory teachings. I'm fed up to my eyes hearing about black this, black that. We've got Indian mouths up the road. Let's talk about the, how America killed and destroyed the American Indian. When was the last time you went to the?
30 seconds.
Went to the gas station and seen a Cherokee or Navajo Indian working at the gas station, owning it and running it? You won't because still to this day, we tell them where to go, when to go, and where to live. Correct me if I'm wrong. Why are you teaching about the American Indian, how we robbed and murdered them all? Is it that racist? What we all did to them? I believe it is. Why are we not teaching them about Latinos? One of my grandkids is Latino. Two of my other grandkids, they come from Muslim descent. Their father's from Iraq and he's a Christian and he's not Muslim.
Mr. Taylor, your time is up.
I only got a little bit, but I think it's important that I say this.
No, please.
I think it's important. This is my first time as chief here.
We need to conclude.
Okay.
We're gonna go on to thank.
Well, I'm just gonna make it real simple. I'm gonna run the next school board, me and my son probably, or one of my friends. And one of you three are going bye-bye. I can promise you that. I'm well-known in the community. So I'm just making sure to get it.
We're gonna go to board discussion.
No, please, don't, please, let, let, follow me right.
Alright, we'll go to board discussion.
Stoller.
And next we're gonna have our five-year forecast update by Justin Levinson.
I know this is what everybody came for.
I feel a little guilty for all the nice stuff to have in there.
Before I get started, uh, I can't remember the guy's name now. I might have his card in my pocket, actually. Well, somebody from the auditor's office stopped by, uh, to present us with this award for, uh, the Auditor of State Award with Distinction. And I wanted to, you know, make sure that Nicole Thunderbird, the Assistant Treasurer, uh, Kate Burton, who does attendance, and Pam Bell, who's a payroll, get credit for having done a good job at keeping things running correctly and making it so that we can, uh, get this award from the auditor. So that's a pretty big deal and they are good staff. So I wanted to give them props on that. Alright, so I printed off copies, cause Steve mentioned that maybe the visuals might.
Can I embarrass you before you start?
Sure, absolutely.
I actually got the award sent to me by a couple of state representatives who were equally as proud of your office. I'd like to read it if you don't mind.
Absolutely, no problem.
So we wanted to share that the following entity in your district and Miami'sburg City Schools received the Auditor of State Award for Distinction. Miami'sburg City School District, the auditor's office presented the Auditor of State Award with Distinction. Um, the entity must prepare financial reports with the Auditor of State's office by the statutory due date without exception to file the HECAL system. The audit report does not contain any findings for recovery, material citations, material weaknesses, significant deficiencies. weaknesses, significant deficiencies, and also includes uniform guidance. And it goes on and on and on, but certainly something to be proud of. So thank you very much to you and your staff, for sure.
Thank you. Like I said, it's really them doing a good job. Before I kind of dive in and forecast, school finances are so regulated, and they're so stringent on how things need to be spent and tracking how things are spent, that, you know, it's really important that you have the staff in place that's able to keep things clean, and that's how you're able to get those awards for the district. But also, it helps with the forecast so that you know kind of where the money's coming and going from. So as I dig into this here, the forecast purpose and objectives. The purpose of the forecast is to engage the local Board of Education and the community in the long-range planning and discussions of financial issues facing the school district, to serve as a basis for determining the school district's ability to sign the certificate required by ORC five seven oh five point four one two, which is known as the four twelve certificate. And to provide a method for the Department of Education and Auditor of State to identify school districts with potential financial problems. So the forecast methodology, this forecast is prepared based on historical trends and current factors. This information is then extrapolated into estimates for subsequent years. The forecast variables can change multiple times throughout the fiscal year, and while cash flow monitoring helps to identify unexpected variances, no process is guaranteed. The intent is to provide the district's financial trend over time and a roadmap for decisions aimed at encouraging financial sustainability and stability. So that's all prepped for. When it doesn't come in the way it says it does, it's because things are changing constantly. We're doing our best to track those. And that Auditor of State Award states that we are doing a good job tracking them. So five-year forecast only covers the general fund. There are several funds that a school district has that is disposable. The general fund is the most versatile, and it's the one the state monitors closely. Few forecast reminders before we start to look at the numbers. So the forecast numbers are only projections. As actuals come in, these projections are going to change. The only thing that I can promise you is that the numbers on the forecast are not going to be the actual numbers, right? If I was able to do that, and I probably wouldn't be sitting here, I'd be making a whole lot of money. So, you know, if I was able to forecast out years in advance on what the actuals are going to be. The role of determining personnel needs, building upkeep, and all number of expenditures is a collaborative effort between cabinet members and department heads, which is then presented to and approved by the Board. And the Treasurer does not solely determine how to address budget concerns, personnel changes, levy asks, or any other method of addressing revenue shortfall. Role of the Treasurer is to track and report the data to help the team develop solutions. All right, so if we start by taking a look at what's changed since November. With school finances, revenues, there's not a lot of variance there. You pretty much know what your district is going to receive, because the bulkfoot's coming to you by way of taxes. So since November, there was a slight increase in what is projected that we'll finish off the fiscal year with, of about point one percent higher than what November showed. And the reason for that is, we got the actual data on the tax reevaluation, and we also received some increased earnings in interest, so we made some banking changes. We started to see that kind of early the last time I gave the forecast, but I wasn't sure how, you know, that would kind of play out as the fiscal year went on. Expenditures are lower by three percent, and the reason for this is that there was a projected amount of ESSR that would be returning to the general fund that did not return this year, that will actually be returned next year. So what that means is that currently, the ESSR fund dollars that are being completely exhausted, some of that took place in this fiscal year, so that next year, we're going to see the chunk that was paid out of the ESSR grant funds roll back into the general fund. We also had lower-than-expected retirement benefit payout. So those changes there, and what led to that, did decrease expenditures, which is good for the district. So on the next page there is the abbreviated forecast. This shows you the beginning balance, the revenue and expenditures, and then I have highlighted red the boxes there containing how we anticipate we'll end out the fiscal year, given our revenue and expenditures, whether we're going to have a surplus or deficit, and then what the impact that is on the cash balance. So the district has projected a deficit spend by one point two million in FY twenty-five, and then as that continues later on in the years, the forecast, that will compound. So that one point two five that we're going to see next year, the biggest portion of that is because ESSR funds are exhausted, and all that's coming back to the general fund. Kind of take a look at the breakdown. I chose to go with next year's projected amounts for revenue and expenditure on the next couple of slides, but this trend is, you see this throughout the entire forecast. So this, the percentages here don't change a whole lot in terms of what makes up the revenue, what makes up the expenses. So the operating revenue that we have for the general fund primarily is funded through tax dollars. So tax dollars and state funding make up ninety-eight percent of the school's revenue. That's why it's a lot easier for us to forecast and get really close on how much revenue we're going to have coming in versus what the expenses ended up being. As property values increase, the district appears wealthier. So this is another component to that. As the district appears wealthier, the state funding formula adjusts to compensate for that, and you get less state money, which kind of stinks, because you count on those state dollars. So if we look at this pie right here, we've got sixty-five percent of it is being locally funded, and thirty-three percent of it is state. As we move later on in the forecast, there will be less state funding making up the whole of our projected revenue. And overall revenue is supposed to, or expected to grow by about three and a half million by FY twenty-eight. So the expenditures visual there looks similar to what the revenue did, giving you the breakdown. So ninety-six percent of expenses for a school district are in our salaries and benefits and purchased services. You can see there where it's projecting that eighty-five percent for salaries and benefits. A lot of times, that's considered kind of like a trigger point for districts where, when salaries and benefits reach eighty-five percent of the expenditures, you begin to have discussion about how you're going to address that moving forward. Expenditures are expected to grow by fourteen point eight million dollars by FY twenty-three. So right there, you kind of have an idea that our expenditures are growing at a much greater rate than the revenue is. It's kind of the same story every time I get up here, and people either fall asleep or they get mad about what I have to say. This is all I've got. On the next page there, just the kind of the annual key revenue and expenditure assumptions. So if you look at, if you want to start looking at on the left-hand side there, the annual change in revenue, you'll notice the historical annual change in revenue was only about six percent, point zero six percent. So that's looking at from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three, there wasn't much growth in revenue, and that tends to be the case most of the time. We've got this projected annual revenue change of two point two-two percent looking forward, and that's because of the reevaluation in property taxes and the district being on the twenty mil floor. I would expect that once the reevaluation update has kind of been averaged back in, you're going to see revenue roughly at that point zero six percent again. And on the other, the other side there, historical expenditure change of one point two-two percent. The reason that that is so much lower than the five point six-eight percent that you're seeing is because the ESSR funds took a burden off of the general fund. So from twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three, you're seeing not very much increase in the expenditures, but that's because you had those additional funds issued. Key takeaway, I feel like, is that expenditure growth is more than double the growth than expected revenue. So how does this impact your cash balance? Revenues will begin exceeding expenditures next year, and then that trend grows throughout the forecast, with larger deficit spending in the later years of the forecast. That's pretty typical of what we see. There's still time to address it, and there's no concern that the state is going to step in, you know, this year or next year to, to address a revenue shortfall, right? Typically, that's if they notice that there is a negative cash balance projected within the first three years of the forecast. And so here, you look out to the last year of the forecast, there's still a positive cash balance, even though it's negligible, or it's not really, it would be like one percent of our budget at that point. Right, right, correct. And that's, actually, if you turn on to the next page, this is a really good visual, and I like the way that this helps explain that cash balance. So this here looks at cash on hand for three hundred sixty-five days. What this means is like, how long can you keep the lights on, right? And the sound fiscal practice is that you should have ninety days of cash on hand, not counting any receivables. So that's taken in the account, your cash balance. So what's your cash balance? And if we look at it, really, by the time you get to twenty twenty-seven is when you've fallen below that ninety-day sort of unwritten rule. Twenty-six also is very close, but I think this gives a better understanding of the change in the cash balance. So some final takeaways here. I think that messaging has been consistent before I got here and since I've been here, that once those ESSR funds were exhausted, there would be a need to address budget concerns, because you have such a large amount of money that rolls back onto the general fund. Under current conditions, deficit spending is projected to occur in FY twenty-five and gets larger in later years of the forecast. Due to being on the twenty mil floor, the district gains revenue from property value increases, but at the same time, the state takes a look at that, and then your state funding will be rolled back. So those are the, the big key factors that I felt like are important to keep an eye on moving forward.
Any questions?
Justin, could you explain something for me briefly one more time? So you said the state becomes really concerned when we have a negative cash balance forecasted. Is that for three years, three years, within three years?
Correct. So they'll look at, like, if there's a, so if we looked at twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, if there was a negative cash balance showing up in twenty-seven, then, you know, I would be hearing from somebody, it would be like, hey, what's the game plan to address this? Because you can't be insolvent as a district. This forecast looks better than it looked in November. Reason for that? We got more money. I mean, for, for good or bad, property values went up, the district's on the twenty mil floor, so we were able to capture some additional revenue that we weren't sure whether or not we would get, because we weren't sure what, how legislation was going to kind of pan out for the school districts. So that's good. But then at the same time, the state funding formula hasn't really addressed that, because they see property values were reevaluated and went up, and said like, okay, well, your district must be able to support more of the cost of a student locally, so we don't need to give you as much. And I don't think that that's the case.
So when I read this, to understand it, so what, ninety days is the mark to have in your cash balance, right? And so what does it tells me is there's two years to make adjustments. Is that right?
Yes. But I, I would think, you wouldn't want to get into year twenty-seven with an available cash balance of fifty-nine days.
Right, right.
Or is it correct?
Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Anyone else? All right, next we'll go on to the elementary enrollment study update. Dr. Blessing.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Neeson, thank you, Mr. Blevins, for the five-year forecast. Real quick, we had our final enrollment programming meeting for May, and we have focusing, we're focusing now on three things. Mr. Holman will talk about the moving, the great move that's going to be happening soon. Just a real quick information for our viewers and also our audience, the maps, the final maps for our reprogramming will be coming available, and they'll be online. We'll also have street maps, so parents can look at what street their student lives on in case we have any movements, or if some students are going to a new school next year, so they can reference that. So we'll be sending out a lot of messages and social media posts so that they can reference that all summer. So be on the lookout for that. It'll be coming soon. And then just a reminder that August eighth, I know it's almost the end of school, but we are planning an August eighth open house for our elementary buildings, also middle school and high school, but for elementary, it'll be important, because some of our students will be going to new schools. So we'll get the dates and all the logistics. We'll be sending that over the summer as well. So, Mr. Holman, you would like to talk a little bit about the move process for everyone? That would be great.
Yes, we've been working over the last couple months. Teachers have boxes and labels. Teachers have had boxes and labels. They're getting ready for building principles. They've been working through everything together. So that will start taking, taking place on June third, I believe, June third, with planes. And it'll take about two to three days tops to get everyone moved. So Ed and Jim and all building principals have been doing a really good job orchestrating, and everyone has their schedules and maps and Excel spreadsheets and, and all that good stuff. So it is interesting, the buildings, the teachers are getting excited, and they've been meeting, and they're getting great levels and what they're going to do, so.
We saw a lot of boxes already packed up at Jane Chan's, so, yeah, it's happening. All right, next we go to our consent agenda, and first we have the approval of overnight extended student trips. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the overnight extended student trips. Tim Fries, boys basketball team, Chris Johnson, Capital University, Columbus, Ohio. Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Oh, okay. Tim Fries, Chris Johnson, Connor Brown, Stephen Crowe, Corey Hartman, and Kip Skank all are joining the boys basketball team at Capital University, Columbus, Ohio. Then we have B, approval out-of-state overnight student trips. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve out-of-state overnight travel. Tim Fries, Chris Johnson, Connor Brown, Stephen Crowe, Corey Hartman, Kip Skank, the boys basketball team for Capital University, Columbus, Ohio. And then we have C. It is recommended that the Board of Education waive the first reading of the twenty-five, twenty-six school year calendar. We have D, the approval. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the twenty-five, twenty-six school year calendar. And then E, it is recommended that the Board of Education establish, establish elementary and middle school fees for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year as follows. Kindergarten through grade eight will be forty dollars, grade six through eight, Spanish twenty-five dollars, and French thirty-three dollars. And F, Michael Black, principal of Myhamsburg High School, has recommended Cheyenne Butler, Caitlin Letman, Joseph Mahaney, and Brianna McCoy, Brianna McCoy, for early graduation, pending satisfactory completion of all state and local requirements. And then we have G, Michael Black, principal of Myhamsburg High School, has submitted the attached class of twenty-four diploma list. These students have been recommended for graduation, pending satisfactory completion of all state and local requirements. And we have H, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the student handbooks for Maddox Lane Primary School, elementary K through five, Myhamsburg Middle School, and Myhamsburg High School for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And I, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the district literacy plan as presented. And then, and J, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve consent items A through I. Do I have a motion? I move that the Board of Education approve consent items A through I.
I second that motion.
So I have a first by Mrs. Getter and a second by Mr. Mallory. Do you want to go into anything about the literacy plan, or?
First, we're going to talk about the calendar, the twenty-five, twenty-six school calendar, I think was on for recommendation. In the board docs on the public comment, content, we did Um, in the board docs on the public comment, content, uh, we did survey our students, we surveyed our staff and our community. So students, do you want to share a little bit about the process that you did? I do have the results if you want me to refer those, or do you guys have it too? I know, you guys have it?
Yeah.
Okay, super.
Um, so, uh, basically, we all got together and we thought that the best way to get a bunch of information really quickly was through a Google form. So we created two different Google forms, one for NHS and one for MMX, uh, and we sent that down to the middle school. Um, the middle school definitely gave us more information than the high school. Um, we had some technical issues at the high school, so we didn't get up to as many people. But overwhelmingly, overwhelmingly, uh, through the questions we asked, phase in day, sounds like it was amazing for all the students who've had it. Um, and then for the calendar, it was most of the, most of the students wanted to keep the current fall break, Thanksgiving break situation we have now instead of changing it. Um, but yeah, that's just an overview of the data we collected from the surveys.
Thank you. And then just to kind of mirror that with our staff and our community, um, our community, we asked them the same questions, and, um, they did feel that the phase in days that we do for our incoming sixth grade and also our incoming freshmen, um, were well received and would like to continue that. And then in terms of, do we have a fall break that we have now in mid-October, because a lot of districts don't have that around us, um, but then some maybe have the whole week off at Thanksgiving. But, um, in terms of the community survey, um, over more than 50% wanted to keep the, the fall break. And then about 27 liked the long weekend just for fall break and for Thanksgiving break. And then a smaller group, 15%, wanted a long weekend for fall break and then have a long weekend for Thanksgiving, or I think more the week off for Thanksgiving. So, and then the teachers, let me share that one as well. The staff felt like, um, the transition day was, was good for our students and for, for the staff. Uh, over 70% of the staff would like to keep fall break, um, and only 22% wanted Thanksgiving break off, and a smaller percentage wanted two long weekends. So our calendar for '25-'26 mirrors those things. So, and that's available on our, on the, you can look at that if you go in the board docs, so. So we appreciate everyone who did complete the survey, so, and thanks, guys, for including
Do you want to talk about the literacy?
Yeah, well, I guess maybe first we'll talk about the middle school, the fees, right? The school fees, I think they're before that. Um, there is a slight bump this year, they haven't been increased in a very long time, and obviously, Justin talked about the increased cost, obviously inflation and a lot of the materials that we used to be able to buy for our students. Um, and we also shared that Miamisburg is probably one of the lowest in the area, um, other school districts, uh, charge anywhere from 60, 50 to 60 to over $100 for those same fees for those students. So I feel like we're still, you know, being very careful, but also recognizing, um, the impact of not increasing those costs that it has on our, our budgets and our finances. So those are those recommendations. And then, of course, uh, we have exciting graduates, not only a few early graduates, but this weekend, hopefully on Saturday at 10:00 AM, weather permitting, um, we celebrated our wonderful retirees as, as school personnel. That is your goal, right? When you're working for a wonderful, um, organization to reach retirement, but for our students, um, high school graduation is the, the big celebration. Um, but we are, um, and then we are approving our school handbooks, which is something that we do every time, and this year we have to have those. But the, the district literacy plan, this is something new that the state is requiring with the science of reading materials. Uh, we have to have that as part of our plan moving forward, um, in terms of following those practices, best practices, and then aligning the materials to what the state is requiring, so.
I had a question on the handbooks.
Okay.
Oops, sorry. I was curious to what, so I read the student code of conduct all the way through, they gotta sign it. What, how do we go about the students reading that? Is that, is that, do they just get to take it home, they read it and they, they sign it? Do we, do we go over that first day of school, or, or how is that implemented?
Students, do you want to talk about what happens? Tim?
Um, so usually on the first day of school, um, or the first week of school, we get, um, a bunch of papers. There's papers about, um, different, like, media privileges, um, classroom code of conduct, and then, um, the high school's code of conduct. Um, we have it, um, a lot of, a, a lot of teachers read through it, um, as we get them and as we're looking through everything, um, but it's a student's responsibility to, um, take it home, sign it, look over it, um, and return it back to the, to their, um, life teacher.
Because when I read it, I read it one thing, and my boys know this, I'll, I'll take a cell phone and a drop of a hat, and, uh, I think it's technology that is, it's great, but I don't know that it needs to be in schools. I'd love to get rid of cell phones in schools. But when it, when some of the, some of the rules I see get broken all the time, I just wonder if, uh, ju- just, for example, like, there's a hood rule in there. I walked to middle school and I seen all kinds of hoods on students, and I just wonder how some of that gets tracked, disciplined, or, you know, why is it in there if we allow
I have a brief question, and it's probably right up your alley, Laura. So you're really familiar with the preschool program, right? When I read through that manual, I mean, I, me and Ann had started touring some of the, um, elementary schools, and I haven't been anything but impressed. I mean, the program's great, um, the, uh, it's been a good experience, but the one thing that caught my eye, and, and, and in the Maddox Lane Handbook, is the $1,200 per year fee for the, uh, people that are self-paying, and just understanding that typical traditional daycare, or preschool, rather, is $1,200 a month. And I was curious, what enables us to have fees that are so substantially cheaper than a private sector preschool?
Well, those were set a few years ago. Um, they're typical peers because the state requires us to have a typical peer model with our preschool, so that our students have typical peers if they're help, if they need development in speech or in some OT and PT skills. So it's a state requirement. Um, our preschool is four days a week, two and a half hours a day, so a typical, two and a half. I think it starts at 9:15 and they're, and they've done it 11:45 or something like that, and then there's a break, and then the next one starts at 1:00 to 3:45. Um, so yeah, so, and they're also only 187.
So it's not a 12-hour day, 6:00 AM, 6:00 PM, five-day-a-week kind of thing?
No, and we don't offer transportation.
Well, that makes a lot more sense.
We don't serve any food.
It's just trying to figure out how we could, there could be such a disconnect and not understanding what it was.
And, and some schools around us charge 1,500, so if it's something, as we're looking at the '26 fiscal year, and as a board, just like we talked a little bit about the fees, you know, we've already, we've already started enrolling for next year, so some of our families have already paid the $1,200. So if it's something as a board, we want to have a more robust conversation as we're starting to look at how to, to right-line that 1.7 million for next year in terms of a deficit, um, and we would like to increase it maybe to, by 300. Um, but you have to remember also that some students who qualify for free and reduced lunch that are a typical peer, then they don't pay that $1,200, or they pay a reduced amount. Um, but, I mean, that's something to, to think about, but, um, it's definitely, a lot of families that use their typical, have their students attend, then they take advantage of a YMCA or another daycare program somewhere else. So they probably are paying what you mentioned.
Right, and, and so when I looked at it, I'm like, well, this is awesome, how are we making this happen? Because there just seemed to be a big disconnect that's short in time, makes, it makes a lot of sense. Makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
All right, then roll call, please.
Mrs. Gettler?
Yes.
Mr. Mallory?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Amesler?
Yes.
Mr. Dappler?
Yes.
All right, next we'll move on to the human resources agenda items. First, we have the approval of personnel reports, certificated and classified. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following personnel reports. Deployment in the Miamisburg City School District is contingent upon the candidate submitting to and passing a BCII and FBI criminal record check in accordance with Ohio Revised Code and pre-appoint, pre-employment drug screening in accordance with adopted board policies. Do I have a motion?
Call motion. Second.
Okay, first by Mr. Mallory, and second by Mr. Dappler. Mr. Homan?
Business as usual, getting ready for the, uh, '24-'25 school year, so any of the changes, new hires, retirements, resignations, those are all on here, so.
Okay. All right. I, I do want to note that, that we do have a couple of, um, recommendations. We have some retirements coming up at the end of this calendar year, and, um, I believe this is where Regina and Jennifer are in this section. Brenda Hibbert, our board secretary, is retiring at the end of the year, in addition to Maryam Lawson, who's our student services admin assistant, and we are making a recommendation for their, um, replacements, because it's gonna take them a while to gain the institutional knowledge that these two ladies have, have brought to the district. For, um, even our student reps know how important Ms. Brenda is, Regina, so you're gonna have to find that out soon, too, so, yeah, but anyway, yeah, yeah. Just want to note that, thank you.
But congratulations, Ms. Homan. Roll call, roll call, please.
Mr. Mallory?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Amesler?
Yes.
Mr. Dappler?
Yes.
Mrs. Gettler?
I'm going to abstain on this vote to comply with Ohio Revised Code, since this item involves my daughter.
Next, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following personnel report, supplemental, stipend, certificated, classified. Once again, employment in the Miamisburg City School District is contingent upon the candidate submitting to and passing a BCII and FBI criminal record check in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code and pre-employment drug screening in accordance with adopted board policies. Do I have a motion?
I move for the approval of personnel report supplemental, stipend, certificated, classified.
Second. So first by Mr. Amesler and a second by Mrs. Gettler. So Homan?
Ditto for mine, just for classified.
All right, roll call, please.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Amesler?
Yes.
Mr. Dappler?
Yes.
Mrs. Gettler?
Yes.
Mr. Mallory?
Yes.
All right. Next, we have the approval of administrative contract renewals. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following administrative contract Do I have a motion?
I move for contract renewals.
Second. And first by Mr. Dappler, and a second by Mrs. Gettler. Mr. Homan?
It's the typical April-May renewals, just like we just did with the other lists.
All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Amesler?
Yes.
Mr. Dappler?
Yes.
Mrs. Gettler?
Yes.
Mr. Mallory?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Abstain due to the Ohio Revised Code. Next, we'll go on to agreements and contracts. The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the following agreements and contracts as presented. Plattberg and Associates Incorporated, four-year contract includes, including current year, 2024 City of Miamisburg Agreement for Summer Parks and Recreation Transportation, Frontline Budget, Budget Management Forecasting Comparative Analytic Software, Premier Occupational Health Agreement for the '24-'25 school year, Rush Truck Centers, purchase of three buses, $332,115, South Community Satellite Board for Mental Health. Do I have a motion? I move that we approve the following agreements and contracts as presented.
I second that.
Okay, so first by Mrs. Gettler and a second by Mr. Mallory. And Mr. Homan?
Yeah, I can hit a couple of these. Um, just summer agreement, we do this, um, each summer, we partner with, uh, the city of Miamisburg, their Parks and Rec, and then, uh, we provide transportation to the day camps that they have, and that also includes any field trips that they take, and then the city reimburses us for the cost of, um, transporting, you know, per mileage and, and the drivers in terms of that, so, um, go pick up the kids in the morning, um, bring them, both camps are gonna be at Mark Twain this year, and then for Mark Twain, then they'll run certain field trips on certain days from then, so. We do it for a number of years, it's a very good partnership, um, with the city, and it's really beneficial to our, our students, it gives them, kind of keeps some consistency for them, um, over their summer, kind of keeps them on, on the schedule as well, so, but we get reimbursed for this also. Um, the Premier Occupational Health Agreement, um, that's another company we kind of have on call. Remember last month, we approved, um, our physicals through, uh, mobile health, so Premier Occupational Health, we use them for workers' comp, um, claims in terms of providing therapies and that. So, and, uh, they do a great job, and we actually have the one right up here, Premier, Premier, Prestige Plaza for Premier up there, so they do a good job for them there, um, and that's just the, the rates that we do for that. And then, um, the Rush Truck, the, uh, the purchase of three buses, that's part of the capital improvement plan that comes out of the permanent improvement fund, not general fund, uh, money. And so if you remember, as we kind of keep talking about the capital improvement plan and December going through that, these, um, three buses here, um, if you know me, I'm always trying to find a bargain, you know? They, um, when we purchased, you remember back, November, December, I think, we purchased the three for that year, because remember the new regs, they have to have two deft tanks on the buses, and that adds a $20,000 increase on each bus. So as we were going through, and I was working with Michelle, um, our transportation, I asked her to reach out to our rep and just say, hey, by any chance, could you have or find us some stock buses like we purchased before? And, um, they had five, I said, I only need three. But what we did is we have three built in the fiscal year '25 budget, and so I worked with Justin to go ahead and increase those appropriations this year, but then decrease appropriations for '25, so we were able to save $60,000 for this. So by buying the ones in December, and here we've saved $120,000 out of PI money, so we always, we always try to do those things and, so. In case you're wondering, like, did we just purchase three, like, so many months ago, but if we could save, if we could save the PI, that money's a thin compound down the road, so.
I was gonna ask you, I was really impressed with the transportation facility, when you took, you explained how, how many buses do we have?
Oh, my gosh, I knew you were gonna ask me that.
Sorry, is it like 70?
Um, we have 60-some, and the reason I say 60-some is, we've been trading them in and out, um, so like, in all honesty, the price here, you're gonna see, it's actually gonna be a little bit lower, because we'll trade in some of the buses that, we've kept the parts, so we no longer, let's say we no longer have Tom's buses, so we can get rid of a couple of those buses that we were saving for parts, because they don't make parts for those buses anymore. Um, but yeah, when I say, we, we have about 60-some.
I mean, I'm happy to credit you, you do a great job, I'm just thinking, is, is three a year enough? I mean, can we get 20 years out of a bus? Say, ultimately, that's what it comes down to, right?
Yeah, we're, right now, by what we've started, um, even, um, back with some of the ESTR money that we had, that you had to save so much aside for, let's say, um, special education and things that would help them with that, we were able to purchase, um, some of the new handicap buses as well, so. Always looking for sale, you know? I know, it's, it's, it's crazy, so. If it's better for us to trade them in, because if we just sold them out, right, we're not gonna, right? I mean, you really can't sell it to a church because they're, we're getting rid of them for a reason. a church, because they're, we're getting rid of them for a reason, they're not. They'll get more for the trade, and they'll get more for the scrap, really, at the end of the day, so.
All right, any other questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Dapler?
Yes.
Mrs. Gettner?
Yes.
Mr. Mallory?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
And next we have our financial agenda items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the required May 2024 five-year forecast to be submitted to the Ohio Department of Education. And B, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the transfer of unused funds from the class of 2024-209824 to the Campus Quest Fund 0709914 after all expenses are paid. And C, it is recommended by the Treasurer CFO that the Board of Education approve the following temporary appropriations for fiscal year '25. In the 001 general account, $15,276,288, and the 002 bond retirement, $1,358,406, and the 003 permanent improvement, $1,323,627, and 00, oh, 006 food service, $674,622, and special trust, $6,420. Oh, I'm going to, all right, so I don't need to read.
Oh, my goodness, that's the improvement chart, it's.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I didn't see the second page yet, okay. All right, so we'll move on to D, approval of purchase orders. It is recommended by the Treasurer CFO that the Board of Education approve the following purchase orders. Teachers' curriculum, $129,000, was that another long, 100?
Yeah.
Don't need to read.
Yeah.
Okay.
These are all the ones over '25 that need the board approval, so.
Then E, it is recommended by the Treasurer CFO that appropriations and certificates of estimated resources be amended as listed in the attached reports. The next F, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve financial items A through E. Do I have a motion?
I move for the approval of the financial items A, Alpha through E, echo.
Second?
I'll second that.
So first by Mr. Amsler, and a second by Mr. Mallory. Next, we go to donations.
Yes.
Oh, roll call.
I wanted to ask, I just wanted a five-year forecast real quick. I've seen three, I think, since I've been on the board, and then, and then the last two years, we always showed that, I mean, we should always be looking to be fiscally responsible and saving and cutting, but it's so hard to get those last two years without showing that, because you never know what the state's going to give you, you never know what the state's going to say, so, all the time, the two years at the end were bad, correct?
It's only two years, yeah. We've been very fortunate, if you look at the past five-year forecast, like Lauren just said, Miami is only for two years, because of what we've done to kind of not spend, that third year, in the last years have always been, it's been the black, so that's a good thing for us, and we want to continue to keep that, you know, going, and that's, you know, some of the strategies that we've talked about in terms of, like, when we hire personnel and things like that, like retirees coming off tonight, and then seeing who's coming on for next year, we work to do that cost analysis of how much are we saving for that? Because when you, when you hire someone like you for the number of years here, all that kind of compounds along the way, so that's when you, when you hire, you start saving some of the savings from the retirement, which is what's coming in. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I think, you know, at least since I've been on the board, there has been all kinds of attempts to save and improve that forecast, so I appreciate that. Roll call, please.
Could I ask you a quick question? Dr. Blessing, I've been hearing a lot about science of reading, and we approved something about a reading initiative earlier, and from what I just understood in our passing conversations as a board, is that the state is requiring that, but they're not giving us enough money for that ask, is that?
Correct. Giving us about $212,000 or $15,000, and typically an adoption, as you see, our adopted materials tonight.
There are a lot.
They're like at least double that.
So is the science of reading stuff in this?
No, these are the POs for the social studies adoption, they're over there on the table.
Right, 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 right.
But they will be coming, we have to select a publisher, and they gave us a list, so we, what we're going to do is we're going to look at when we originally adopted our PI budget for English Language Arts, and we're going to ask to kind of what Steve did, and he said, I'm going to use the '25 PI budget, because we have a five-year forecast for our PI, our five-year plan, so instead of waiting a couple of years to buy our English materials and reading materials, we're going to have to buy them sooner, so we'll have to do some budget transfers, because our PI budget does have a cash balance as well, so we'll be able to use more to buy those materials now, and then we won't have, need to use that money in a couple of years, and we're lucky we have that, there are some districts that might not have that ability.
Is it frequent that the state makes these changes like required?
I think the math is coming next.
Well, I know what I'm saying, is it, is it common that the requirement comes down from above with half the funding?
Unfunded mandates, all the time.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're going to talk about self-funding a little bit on the legislature, and they're going to want us to crack down, is what the language says.
Yeah.
But a lot of that requires purchasing some magnetic devices and things like that, and there's no money attached to put that, so. Not to get off on a tangent.
No, no, thank you, I was, I've got that for next.
Yeah, lots of unfunded mandates, for sure, but roll call, please.
Mrs. Gettner?
Yes.
Mr. Mallory?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
And Mr. Dapler?
Yes.
All right, now we'll move on to the acceptance of donations. It is recommended that the Board of Education accept the following list of donations. All monies will be used through each school's 018 account unless indicated otherwise. $2,500 from the American Legion Post 165 to the Miami-Sherbrooke Athletic Department towards the purchase of a Gator. $7,500 from the Miami-Sherbrooke Visual Ensemble Booster Association, GBA Miami-Sherbrooke Winter Color Guard, to Miami-Sherbrooke City Schools for Miami-Sherbrooke Winter Color Guard stipends. $5,000 from the Viking Booster Association to Miami-Sherbrooke Athletic Department for the wrestling floor. And $2,500 from the Wrestling Boosters to Miami-Sherbrooke Athletic Department for wrestling floor. Do I have a motion?
I make the recommendation for donations, or acceptance of donations.
Second. Okay, first by Mr. Amsler, and a second by Mrs. Gettner.
Thank you, yeah.
Yes, thank you so much.
Very much, yes.
All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Mallory?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Dapler?
Yes.
Excuse me, Mrs. Gettner?
Yes.
All right. The next one is information only. The next Board of Education regular meeting will be held on Thursday, June 27, 2024 at 6:00 PM. Miami-Sherbrooke School Board of Education, 540 East Park Avenue. The local professional development committee, LPDC, of the Miami-Sherbrooke City Schools will hold their 2024-25 meetings on the following dates. September 18, 2024, January 22, 2025, March 19, 2025, and May 7, 2025. All meetings for LPDC will be held virtually during the 24-25 school year.
Yeah, so anytime, LPDC is the local professional development committee, they're the ones that we work together to renew teachers' licenses, and so those are public meetings, so just like school board meetings, so we have to advertise them, so.
All right, next we go to our report section, and we'll start out with Molly Williams, our report for the MBCTC, Miami Valley Career Technology Center.
So good evening. Us as every other school district here in Ohio is a really busy time, so they started out with the ribbon cutting at the new facility that was on Bay 10th, and I was really happy to see Mrs. Gettner here, she both really enjoyed the ceremony and everything, and they had a public opening as well, so you can tour the building, meet the students, meet the investors, and we begin to know what they're offering out there, so that was a great evening. The staff recognition is tomorrow, and lunch send-off, and also tomorrow night is graduation at UD, they're going to try the UD, this is their first time, so kind of excited, kind of very respectful, don't even know where to go, so, we'll find out. But that's tomorrow night at 6:30, and then the adult education graduation is May 23, and that's at 6:00 PM, and it is actually at the facility on Coke Road, they call their big huge cafeteria the MAC Room, and it will be hosted there, which is a lovely facility as well. The board meeting was on May 14, which was Tuesday, and beginning of 7, and they did the usual roll call and approval minutes, but I was not there, I have to confess, I had a personal conflict, but I do have the agenda and the items that they were talking about, and it's very similar to what you guys are talking about right now, with new hires and budgets and five-year forecasts and everything, so, hate to say that, fair values, but I have all that to give to you again, so. Month ending cash balances of April was $63,496,28, 43 cents, Mr. McKee likes to have those pennies in outline, but I've had, included the financial report with these minutes, so I turned all of this over, and if you guys ever have questions, it should be in the information board, you can always ask me, so. There was a five-year forecast that was also presented by Mr. McKee, and that was approved by the board, and I include the full report with the notes that I have. Improvements to property tax collection will increase the budget by over $1,655,400, and property tax revenues will increase by $56,855 from the previous forecast. Interest revenue is also up with an increase of $110,000. But this was kind of interesting, the collections by county, because they are a school that are funded by so many different counties. The highest change was Shelby County at 43.78%, the lowest change was Champaign County with 0% change, and then Montgomery County with a 30.64 change, which added $1,519,300 each. So we weren't the highest, we weren't the lowest, but we were one significant change. One of the great things is, my MBCTC was awarded the overall five-star award for the district's performance for 22-23 school year, they also completed the CAGNA, does anybody, can you tell me what CAGNA is? I think it's just for, yes. Yes, and it was for their accreditation, so Dr. Stephen O'Gorman did it virtually, and he was so impressed with the facility, that he then came to the facility, because he wanted to, and he said, our facility is in the top 2% in the United States, so that's a pretty cool accreditation for them. There were several board policy revisions due to House Bill 33, a lot of it was wording, things like that, so I do have that in here, but I didn't want to get in the means with that one, but I do have it in here for you to look at. So some of our Miami-Sherbrooke students, again, are always doing great things when they're out there, so FCCLA is a regional competition, and in March, and in April, in March they went to regionals, and in state in April, and Ashley Bailey got a gold in hospitality, tourism, and recreation, and Brooke Wilmore got a gold in leadership, so that's great to see. This was a cool one. The computer network and cybersecurity student Nicholas Stewart, who is from Miami-Sherbrooke, presented with two other students from CTC to NASA, and they went to the Johnson Space Center in Houston, Texas, to give their presentation to NASA. Right, I was like, I want to be down when I grow up, so, it's pretty cool. And then 11 of the CTC students were on advice and clear, earned their associate degree while they were at CTC and doing all their regular stuff, they also got their associate degree, so, these kids are on the move, so. Some of the important dates to remember are, tomorrow, the staff recognition at 11, and graduation is at 6:30, and then adult education is on Thursday, May 23, and I will be at graduation and also at the adult graduation, but I won't be at the staff recognition because of staffing issues, so. The adult education program is actually changing, because they have found it's been lagging for the last couple of years, it's interesting, because they are up against programs like Sinclair and other colleges like that, that get state funding, federal funding, so they can offer their services at a lower cost, so CTC has said, what can we do to gain these adult students and give it at them an affordable rate that we can compete? So what they're doing is they're taking, they're going away from the full-time pathway to a shorter-term class period, so people who are working 95 jobs can still go and do these things, and they have found, finding that that is very successful, so, some of these classes include dental assisting, nurses aides, whelmography, machine shop, HVAC Level 1, and welding, and then next year, because it's doing so well, they're going to add the electrician Level 1 and HVAC Level 2, so it's nice to see, because those numbers have been dropping over the last several years, that they're finding ways to become more relevant, so. They have been in negotiations with the Education Association, and they've gone very, very well, and I will have their final report next month, they're really close. There is a resolution with intent to terminate one employee, it was Jordan Wells, he has been suspended on May 3 for investigation of misconduct, do we talk about this here? Okay, so that was the only thing that, it won't be resolved until June, so, but I didn't know if I should tell you those things or not, and it's sad. There has a lengthy list of employees and staff that are being renewed for the 24-25 school year, and I have added those lists in my notes, because there's like 35 people, so I don't think you want me to move that one either, and we had some great retirements, but people have been in the school system 35 years, 27 years, so, it's kind of cool to see how dedicated people are to CTC. And then this is one thing that I thought was interesting, out of all the surveys and all the people that have gone through CTC, they actually have a quote by our fifth-grade teacher from Bear Elementary, because it reflects the impacts on the tours, on the students, and on the staff. They had over 4,010 students from 26 participating schools and three charter schools who toured CTC, and there was 384 chaperones that went through the school and the program, so I'll redo this quote, because I thought she was very present in her thing. This is their five-year forecast and assumptions, so we like reading if anybody wants to. It's really impressive, there's pie charts and color and all sorts of things, I did, I did go through it. This was the thing I put in here, and it is about the changes by county, so if anybody wants to take a look at that, they are welcome to, and then this is the quote, and they did not give the teacher's name, so I can't give her credit, but, "From the minute we stepped off the bus until we were leaving, every aspect was well thought out and organized. It was engaging for the students and brought excitement. The staff at MBCTC were knowledgeable, kind, and worked well with their students. The MBCTC students were all kind, welcoming, and well-spoken, were providing information about their programs, and more than willing to answer any questions the students might have. This is a wonderful opportunity for students to see many potential avenues and pathways for them to be successful in life. My fifth-grade students were excited and are thinking the long-term plans now. Thank you for the opportunity to tour their campus." I thought that was very well spoken, and it just kind of shows the reflection of the relationship that Miami-Sherbrooke has with CTC, and how well thought of, they think of us and we think of them. and how well thought of they think of us and we think of them. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. Does anybody have any questions?
I mentioned your open houses attend, because my, the household had different plans for me. Is there any other open houses?
I'm sure that they will have some in the fall, because it is such a great facility. During the summer, they are going to be redoing the parking lots and finally doing the outdoor work, and they want to get that all done before the students come back. So I would say probably not for this summer, because the exterior is going to be a hot mess.
You'll let us know that.
I will let you know, because it's worth seeing. It is definitely worth the trip.
I'm looking forward to it.
Yeah. Yeah.
We have the legislative lights on. Mr. Mount.
This will be pretty brief. House Bill 529, the CCP bill, had its first hearing in the primary, secondary education committee on May 17th. It'll likely be taken up in the fall. House Bill 250 was signed into law. There's a lot of talk about cell phones, so the two things that I brought are kind of relative tonight for that. House Bill 250 was signed into law to women's cellphone usage, which I think we already have policies to do that, don't we? Or is it required? Does it make it have to be further curtailed?
Our high school allows, students have cell phones, it's really based on the teacher in the middle school. They have to keep them in their lockers, and we just discourage elementary students from bringing them to school. It's in their handbooks.
So reading through this, it just requires us to have a policy, right? Which we already do, right? Okay. The other cellphone bill...
It'll be interesting with the crackdown.
Yeah, because it's, it's a lot different. House Bill 183 is in the Senate at the moment. And Senate Bill 485, that's the one where they're trying to crack down on the cellphone and social media. And you're understanding the cost of that, I could see value in that, because I think teachers would benefit from it, and students would too. But you know, how many students do we have in the middle school, high school that, how many pouches would we need to buy? And again, that's really what I'm asking.
About 3,000. Just be 2,700 to 3,000.
And how much do they cost?
And we do, we do limit network access. I mean, if you use our Wi-Fi students, Snapchat is blocked, some of the social media is already blocked. But students have their own cell...
Cell signal.
Signal, so.
Great. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Do any of our student reps want to say anything about that? Like, do you have any opinions?
Do you think it would help, we have different costs?
I know that there are some students who like to abuse the fact that teachers may less than have their phones on them. But I do know that sometimes it's not the worst thing. I know in my French class, we were using our Chromebooks, and my Chromebook just wasn't working. And we had a test that day, and the media center was closed, I think. So she was like, "Just use your phone." So it's things like that that I think need to really be like looked into, like, is it really beneficial to like totally have no cellphone access for the students?
Thanks, Maddie. Anybody else? Andrew?
Um...
I think they all have a video.
Yeah. Like Maddie said, you know, in the high school at least, I know it depends on the teacher. And some teachers are really lenient with it, others not so much. From what I've seen, from being an lenient teacher, it becomes a problem as, you know, the year progresses. But I've been in classrooms where they just have phone charts, and those tend to work really well. Yeah, because you know, it lets the students have the freedom to have them in between classes and at lunch. And anytime not in the classroom, when they're in the class, it's away and out of sight and doesn't bother anyone. So you know, it just, I don't see like fully taking away our phones would be an interesting concept for students to try and think through. And they might not like it all that much, but at the end of the day, it's whatever can help the students the most in their education.
I know a lot of students who do abuse the cellphone power, but you know, my people on it is if you're in class and you're choosing to get on your phone, even if the teacher tells you to get off of it, that's kind of your fault. If you've been a bad grade in that class, I think you should be held accountable because you shouldn't have been on your phone. So I think taking away the cell phones completely, number one, I don't think it would work very well. Students are sneaky, and teenagers, like, once you learn about a rule, you want to break it. I mean, not me, but most teenagers. But I don't think taking away them completely would be good. Now, what Andrew said about the cellphone charge, I think that's a really good idea.
Those are poor, those are not very expensive.
Are they just like coffee?
They're like pumpkin chunks, okay.
They're really calculatable.
Okay.
Calculatable.
Did you go say to do, do laws with Desert One?
That's what I was...
What was it about? What does it say?
It's just a merger, I don't think, right now.
It came out fully yet?
It has, I just didn't, I didn't have any... House Bill 250, you file a...
I think it's supposed to take them away from completely, whether... My understanding. Because if you don't, they're going to just penalize you if you don't abide the rule, without knowing what it works.
All right, so so did you have an opinion?
I think that discussion is a little interesting, because this year in my seminar class, I actually did a group presentation where we did like research, doing a presentation. And my group chose to look at the problem of cell phone in schools. So like, through all the research we did, we looked at a bunch of articles, we all wrote individual like research essays. And like, we, our final solution, we came down to the phone caddy thing. Like, it's an affordable thing. There's a lot of like limitations and consequences to other solutions. So the phone caddies, like phone charts, those boxes would be really helpful. And I think that's a really good solution, if we're looking into the future.
So the phone caddy wouldn't be as provocative an object, it'd give the flexibility to use it if you needed a technological resource, but still have a spot for it, not to be in your hand.
Like especially my...
I think that's, I think that's a very reasonable approach.
Yeah. Like especially my freshman year, most of my teachers had those. So like, after being in class, you put your phone in the phone caddy, at the end of class, you get it. If you have an emergency or someone's calling you, you're going to know, and you're going to have access to your phone.
Thank you.
That's what Mrs. Crosswell has in her class, right? It's hanging, and everybody puts it in there. That's what I thought. Was there data in that study that showed that, oh wait, students away from the phones is better? Okay, I'm just curious. Well, I can tell you this, it is announced at the high school. Put away, I mean, I've taught it in few classes. However, Sophia is right. I mean, she's right, she's dead on. You tell somebody they can't do something, they're going to do it, or they're going to try to do it. The fact of the matter is, it's coming, it's coming here, and we're going to have to have a conversation about it. So it's just a matter of time.
Next we'll have the smart watch conversation, right? Yeah. Thank you for your, thanks for your input. We appreciate your input. Thank you. Next we'll go on to our student achievement. Lights on. Mr. Hamslar.
Other students of the month representative included Bauer Elementary School Kendall Ingram, Bear Elementary School Jayvon Harris, Jane Chance Elementary School Amelia Carbola, Kinder Elementary School Peyton Davis, Mark Twain Elementary School Ryland Meredith, Mound Elementary School Stevon Sanchez Romero, Miami'sburg High School Lynn Bougie, and Miami'sburg, oh, Miami'sburg Middle School Lynn Bougie, and Miami'sburg High School Judah Parker. So congratulations to them for the students of the month. Oh, I guess I got others. That was April. So other students of the month included Bear, Bauer Elementary School Mailey Epp, Bear Elementary School Cole Burke, Jane Chance Elementary School Zoe Hatfield, Kinder Elementary School Zoe... What? Becky. Mark Twain Elementary School Brian Cuddy, Millerby Elementary School Lojane Akaswani, Mound Elementary School Ali Senga, and Miami'sburg Middle School Natalie Gilmore. So congratulations to all of those students.
Next we have our Montgomery County Drug Free Coalition lights on. Mrs. Gettner.
We had a live meeting today versus a Zoom meeting that we had at the sheriff's department. And today we had presentations from three not-for-profit Christian resources that provide care for women involved in trafficking. And they can be anywhere in the Montgomery County, but two of them specifically were in Dayton. One was in East Dayton, and one was in downtown Dayton. Also, the Montgomery County Drug Free Coalition fundraiser is scheduled at Sinclair Community College, September 19th at 5:30 p.m. It includes food and a comedy show. It sounded like a lot of fun. Then we had an announcement that the Montgomery County Jail is now offering a drug and alcohol program for those who are in jail and want to get clean. It was a very interesting meeting, always, always a lot of, lot of community work and support going on for those that are having problems.
Thank you. Mr. Hamslar, district news and information.
See if I can embarrass myself tonight. So we'll start off with the following 10 seniors at Miami'sburg High School made a decision to continue their academic and athletic careers at the next level. Best flacious, two Garrett Barnett, Clark State College for baseball. Jordan Heed, Bowling Green State University cheerleading. Hallie Oldsmen, Thomas More University, bowling. Isabel Ke... Lee? Keppel? Kiahoga Community College. Lincoln Curl University, uh, that was for softball, I'm sorry. Lincoln Curl University of Cumberland Wrestling. Loose, Lacy? Lassa? Lassa. Lyton Lake Area College lacrosse. Fletcher Rose, Ashland University of Wrestling. Ellis Sabley, University of Dayton cheerleading. Nicole Schroder, University of Indianapolis Soccer. Eden Shade, Muskegum University. And this is what's going to be interesting. The latest Making a Difference honorees were Kinder's media paraprofessional Kim Krizki and Miami'sburg Middle School paraprofessional Marcy Stewart Kaiser. We'll start with Marcy, because there's a little tune for Kim. So teammate would like to nominate Marcy Stewart Kaiser for Making a Difference Award. Marcy goes above and beyond for all of our students daily. Marcy helps students catch up on their work, get organized, and encourages students who need a little extra support. Marcy is a great asset to our team. She takes the initiative to make sure all students are engaged in our classroom. Marcy also has a kindness arc. She makes sure no student goes without supplies. She brings extra pencils, notebooks, and calculators to class to ensure all students can be successful. Marcy motivates students to do their best. Ms. Kaiser treats every student like her own. Marcy's dedication to our team is invaluable. Teammate teachers and students are lucky to work with her. So Caitlin, uh, Lam... 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 What's her name? Miss Caitlin and Ally Masters. Thank you for this. Kim goes above and beyond her typical duties at the media center. As a media center specialist, you never find her simply sitting behind her desk cataloging books. Whether she is having lunch with kids, running a group, or co-regulating with a student, Kim is always willing to help anyone. Her care for kids is, and innovate, innovation can be seen in the fun, in the fun things she plans for all students that encompasses all learning standards from ELA, math, science, social studies, and SEO. Examples include Dinoember, Lego Museum, Upper Contraps, creating pen tiles for students in other buildings, and multi-century reading experience. Kim bundles creativity and genuine concern for the well-being and education of students. Make her an excellent candidate for the Making a Difference Award. Kim, it's safe to say, "You've got the right stuff." Which leads into, I didn't know what NKOTB meant, which was in my era of music that I wasn't really down with, I guess. But that is New Kids on the Block. So first Kim is great, first Kim is a great time. Second, she is a blast. Third, Kim loves all the books and recommends them fast. She really walks the walk for kids, hears her kids when they talk. When she is everything you do, you care, never, your care never stops. "You got the right stuff, Krizki." "Love the way you make things fun." "You got the right stuff, Krizki." "Krizki, you're the reason why we sing this song." "Oh, you got the right stuff." I've never been a karaoke guy.
All right, thanks, everyone. And next we'll go to our roundtable comments, and we'll start with Sophia.
I don't really have a lot to say, just probably one comment. I just wanted to add to what Andrew said earlier about our survey that we sent out about the 2025 and 26 school year. With the Face and Day, we actually offered the middle schoolers to put comments about what they thought about it. And some of those comments, they're like pretty basic, and then there were some that... Sorry. There were some that had a really good idea. I don't know if anyone knows about the Viking mentors we do at the high school, where Face and Day, we have upperclassmen come in, and they kind of give freshmen like advice and kind of just give them the tour. And I believe all of us are Viking mentors this year. But a couple of comments said that they thought it would be a good idea to put A-grade mentors for the sixth graders. And probably too late to do that in the school year for next year, but I think that'd be something we could talk to the principals and look into, because I think it's a good leadership opportunity for A-graders. But yeah, I think that's it. So thank you.
Okay. Sorry, one of those comments was, I saw it there. Anyways, I don't have much to say either, but you know, watching all the teachers retire today was kind of special. Three of the teachers that retired today, I've had, they were my teachers, I was in their class. And it just goes to show like the teachers are the cornerstones of education. They make learning fun, and they make kids want to come to school. And I definitely felt connections with them as their students. And I always had a great time going to their classes. And yeah, they're, you know, they help shape kids to who they are when they grow up. And they're just amazing people, and we love the teachers, so yeah.
So congratulations to all of our seniors this coming. Graduation is one of my favorite days of the year. It's very, we've been in the district a long time. You see kids from preschool all the way to 12th grade. And you know, some days are harder days than others being in education. But on graduation, it's one of those days that really make you reaffirm why you're in the position. And what we do is educators, whether you're teaching the classroom or we're classified employees, it takes everyone in this district to, to make it happen every day. And I really wish community members would have an opportunity to see that those relationships that all of our staff build with kids every single day. Because I will tell you, I think we have some of the most caring staff I've ever seen. Talking with other districts, the above and beyond that our staff does is why Miami'sburg is a great place, so. So congratulations to all the graduates, and then of course, our retirees. You know, when you've been here a long time, and you look to see that, some of them, I started student teaching at a time with them and teaching with them. They're really great people. When you look at the number of years of experience in our paraprofessional assistants that were in there, Doug Courtney's been a head mechanic for us for many years. I mean, he's, he's top-notch in the state. Everyone knows who he is. Everyone knows who he is. Um, and so the, the amount of years in service, we are very, very grateful. When you, when you hear that many years, that is not common in a lot of districts to, to be here that long. I don't know if people realize that. That's normal for us, but that is not normal in most districts. So, um, also, Joanne, we do a plug here. So, um, getting ready for the summer, we, I am having, um, several bus drivers retire and van drivers. So I am doing my plug. Um, summertime is a great time to, to get trained, um, to do that. If you're not sure you want to be a bus driver, we can meet you on a Saturday, take the bus in the parking lot, have you kind of feel how it feels. It's not as scary as you think, but, um, really consider it. We, we have van drivers too. Um, and so when we, um, if you're, don't enter a drive a bus, but you're looking for some hours a day, seriously, you know, consider it. Um, you, it's another way that you could build some really good relationships, um, with our kids out there. And, um, last but not least, the CTC, um, Molly, they have just fabulous programs out there. And, um, when we look at the number of kids that we, I, I think one of the best things that we do in our district is that we give kids choices of what they want to do in life and to really start thinking through what they, they want to do. And the CTC has done such a great opportunity to provide many, many opportunities and avenues. And I think once again, when we look at what we offer to our kids and what we do as a district for kids and, you know, not every student is going to be college writing. Not every kid, student knows what they want to do, but it gives them options. And the fact that, um, we're starting in the elementary school to have people really start to think through what they want to do, um, I, I think it's really good. And I think I'm going to be reaching out because we got to replace one of our mechanics. So we're gonna be talking to the CTC to see who's out there because, um, a couple, you know, one of our latest ones that we did, did come from the CTC and it's a fabulous mechanic. He goes over to other places and teaches other bus mechanics things. So those are things that we're using our resources, um, to go through. So anyway, that's all I have to say. So congratulations and congratulations and looking forward to Saturday and hoping for sun. No rain.
I'm gonna be quick. Um, board members, after, before you leave tonight, I have a list. I got it today from the high school. It's our graduates, um, 14 pages. Um, so what I need to have you do is highlight, uh, the student's name that you need to give a diploma to and then we'll match it up, um, for Saturday. So we know what order in that way. Get as much done as possible before Saturday when we get there. Um, so I got that right here in the highlighter. So just highlight it and then you'll see where you just put your initials. So, so I know. Um, I want to say congratulations to our retirees. Anytime you can go out on your own, uh, is a, an accomplishment. Um, so with that being said, um, I think Megan's already lo- left, uh, but I know Tim Fries is here. Uh, the passion and dedication that you provide to our students. I know Tim and Megan both came from middle school and now at the high school. What they do for our students and, uh, our community is fabulous and outstanding and it's, they're given a quiet and opportunity. So congratulations to them. And then finally, before I think, uh, we break for the summer, um, I will tell you, um, you four individuals that have sat here have sacrificed, um, a night, whether it be an hour and a half, two and a half, three hours, whatever it is, at a board member, at a board meeting. I know you guys have learned a lot, um, but I want to say personally, I appreciate, um, everything that you guys do for our school, for our students and, and the time and energy that you guys have shown to us and the advice that you guys have given to us when we've asked you. So with that, I would say thank you for being here. Okay?
Um, I have a mom of three and they all went to my infirmary. Mr. Holman was their principal and he just rocked. He was great. But they were all three different kids and different education levels and what they needed and what they did. You know, I was always so impressed at how Myhersburg did everything for all three of them in very different ways. And now I get to see, kind of behind the curtain because I, I didn't know how much went into what you do every day, how much time you all spend, how your teachers spend all this time. It's, it's not easy. You have so many restrictions and requirements and regulations and rules, but you do it such grace and such love for the students. I, the more I learn, the more impressed I am with Myhersburg, with CTC, Hal, and with these students that are in front of me. I'm like, they're way smarter than we were when we were young. I just think that's very true. So thank you for being here and congratulations to all the graduates. I'm excited for your futures. I mean, it gives me really good hope for all the cool things that our students can do. So thank you.
This last week I had the pleasure of visiting Jane Chance with Ms. Nice and, um, had the pleasure of meeting and getting to know, uh, Principal Guy there well. And, um, he took the time and, um, it, you know, it really makes it personal to see students' faces and, um, see the people that are there helping them, the aides. Um, uh, it makes it real. And I, and I mean, you know, uh, it's important to have done that. I'm looking forward to doing that again at Bauer next week. Um, graduates, um, I'm blessed to have one this year and I'm really looking forward to that. Mr. Fries, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Where will the link be posted so out-of-town family can watch graduation over the internet?
Uh, I know that Angela Kerwin, our secretary, put it out for the high school and then Brenda asked for it today. I gave it to her today. So it should be on the district website.
Just send it to the website. Okay.
Yep.
I have to pass that on to a few people that are in, uh, Kansas and Minnesota. Um, the students, are they back from DC, the eighth graders?
Yes.
Their community. Um, unfortunately COVID, uh, caused my graduate to miss that opportunity. And, um, I'm really glad that's back. It's a fun experience for the kids and it's, and I hope to hear some stories. Um, I want to thank the retirees, uh, 331 years, 76. I mean, that's very impressive. Um, and, um, it was nice to be able to participate in that. I wish them all the best. Um, I hope everybody has a good summer break.
I guess I would just have to say ditto about graduation. It, it's such an exciting day. And to congratulate, congratulate the retirees, um, the students of the month. Megan Newton for her project downtown Myhersburg. It's just so cool with the new river, riverfront park. And, you know, we're just going to be an exceptional community. We already are, but, you know, just the icing on the cake. Um, thanks to the media arts students and teachers for speaking tonight. I did attend a couple concerts this last week at the Myhersburg Middle School and at the high school. I could not believe how crowded the Myhersburg Middle School was. The high school was as well, but there wasn't even enough room for people to sit. So it's so exciting to see so many parents engaged and grandparents engaged in, in the concerts this week. And they were, it's unbelievable how well the eighth graders play music. It, it's fascinating. Um, the other thing I just wanted to say as the year ends, I just wanted to thank, um, Jason Osborne and Jason Shade and all the coaches and all the band directors because our band does fall under the athletic umbrella. I don't know if all of you know that, but that's one really cool thing about our district. Um, you know, sports and the band are just really wonderful avenues, um, for kids to have those intelligence that. There's a theory called the multiple intelligences and one is a bodily kinesthetic intelligence and one is the music intelligence. And I just feel like these sports and all these band activities help the kids feel, or help give them the support to feel a sense of belonging. So I just want to thank all those, um, Jason and Jason and all the coaches and all the band directors for their dedication. And that's it.
Uh, phase in day, my son, I think, was one of the first years, my youngest son, and he, he really enjoyed it at the middle school. So, um, I was 324.2 years. That's amazing. Uh, there's not much more to say about that. I, uh, ditto on, on the art, media arts. That's great stuff. Uh, this Saturday, um, you know, I don't know how fun and exciting you guys think school board is. I mean, it's, it's a blast, but graduation is by far my favorite thing to do. There is always something in there that, uh, makes me well up or, you know, you know, the, the speeches. Um, it's, it's really an amazing thing. Uh, it's my favorite thing that, that I, that I do here. So, um, that's it. Have a good summer and, um, see you on Saturday with something.
I just want to say earlier when I was talking about the ladies that are responsible for the auditor stable work, that I left out Marilyn Cooper who since retired. She was a big part of that. Um, John Espy, who was my predecessor. And then Alicia Wiggins is also doing a great job in her role, but she was not here when they, this reporting period. So just wanted to make mention of that. Thanks.
I want to congratulate Justin and his staff for an excellent audit. That's just so important to our school. You know, we have to be physically responsible. Um, also congratulations to both Carmen and Kara for being chosen students of the month. Very exciting. And I wish the best for all the retirees. Thank you for your dedication to our students and to the district. And I agree with Steve, to have 300-plus years, that's, you know, amazing. Congrats to our upcoming graduates participating, participating in graduation is definitely a highlight for me for serving on the board.
Well, ditto what everyone else has said. Um, I do want to take this time with four days of school left. Our staff, we talked about coaches, we talked about everyone, but, um, I just want to take this time to recognize our staff because we can't govern and lead without the, the work that is done every single day in our buildings and our apartments. And I am just so proud, um, to be your leader and support you. And I also appreciate the support the board gives to our staff, our community and our parents. And we just have great students and great staff and it's an exciting time of the year. I know it's busy. I know we've got a lot going on, but it's just so exciting to see it all come together. And graduation is a wonderful event for our students and retirements are always a wonderful thing for educators to, to work toward as well. So, thank you. All right, Mike.
Um, I guess I just want to say congratulations to all the retirees. I'm happy to see that they're going to next July. Um, and then congratulations to the class of 24. I will be going, watching all my friends.
Are you at 25?
Yes. But yeah, it's just really great at this time of year to see all of that. Everyone's so happy at the end of the school year and people are moving on. So, yeah.
Um, I as well want to, um, congratulate all the retirees, um, and the graduates. Uh, that's, both of those are like such huge milestones, um, in their lives. So, um, congratulations about that. Uh, also I thank you to both the media arts, um, program and the trip that they take to, to New York. Uh, I'm in the media arts one program. So I'll be doing that next year, which I'm very excited for. Um, as well as.
Do you need a chaperone? I can go with you.
Um, as well as Ms. Newton's, um, community outreach. I know she's been working, um, super hard on the boards and the blue line. Um, so seeing a- all that stuff getting done, um, is really nice. And, um, I also want to talk about the, um, phase in day as a Viking mentor, which we, all four of us are, um, Viking mentors, but I see things that I didn't know about the high school or, um, classrooms that I didn't know about. Uh, so I think that it's really, um, beneficial to everyone there.
Thanks, everyone. All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm in to adjourn. I second.
Okay, first by Mr. Dapler, second by Mr. Mallory. Number one call please.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Dapler?
Yes.
Mrs. Gettner?
Yes.
Mr. Mallory?
Yes.
Uh, 8:46, 8:45? 8:47?